Okay, it's seven o'clock. This is going to start, Mike. Welcome to the Plating Board Meeting of June 1st, middle of the year, or it was just ten o'clock. Would you join in a pleasure, please? A pleasure, please.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, united, and that is law, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Alina?
Here.
Mr. Bishani?
Here.
Mr. Cosell?
Here.
Mr. Martha?
Here.
Mr. Mixel?
Present.
Mr. Dardina?
Here.
And Mr. Artuso?
Here.
Mr. Ginnis?
Present.
Okay, we've got two table matters and three scheduled matters. I know there's a bunch of people here from Coastal View, and I'm just going to ask, let's give them respect, because they're so uptight, and just kind of keep it down, limit your talk to like five minutes of yourself, try and compact, so we don't just keep repeating everything over and over again. We appreciate that. And, let's see, when do we have to go up especially? It's our public hearings, so, okay, go ahead. I guess, Dave, go ahead. I'm going to leave the first one.
Coastal View subdivision section five, located at the western end of Coastal View Drive, Epicent Lake Lane, LLC, request the preliminary final subdivision site plan modification associated with the subdivision of land and construction of nine single-family residents on a 30.86 acre parcel located in WD Waterfront Development District under the code of Town Webster.
Okay, Michael.
Good evening. My name is Mike Ritchie from Costas Engineering, also with me tonight Stacy Herlambides and John Gonzalez. We were previously in front of this board back in May, there were some questions regarding homeowners association and open space, and I believe some residents had some comments. We requested that we table the application to give some of the residents an opportunity to review the application, and in the meantime, the Town of Webster, PRC met, we received some technical comments from town staff. We met with town staff last week to go through these comments, and they're all technical in nature, and we will work with the town engineer to address each and every one of these comments to her satisfaction. So, just to give a little history on the project as well, this is section five, the last section of Coastal View subdivision. The preliminary approval was in 2003. As part of that development, a certain amount of open space was required to be set aside. As of section four, 18.3 acres of the required 24 acres have been set aside. We are proposing, with the application in front of you tonight, to propose three acres in addition to the minimum required in order for some of the other residents of the Coastal View subdivision to be able to petition this board to potentially re-subdivide and make those former HOA lands along the lake part of their property. So, I think Stacy and John have kind of gone out of their way to try and accommodate some of the residents in the neighborhood. You know, with that, again, I think it's pretty straightforward, happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I guess the last time we talked, more of the prime things, I think residents wanted the current ones, that there be the proposed units to be included into the HOA.
And that is correct.
And I guess you've done that.
Correct. So, section five will be a part of the HOA.
Okay. You recall asking to move that road a little bit to the south, you did that.
Correct.
That increased the size of the depth of the lots, it was moving to the south of the area. What else have we got? I think there was some comments from the high-risk part of the area, railing along there?
Yeah, there's a stretch by moving that road a little bit farther to the south, got a little bit closer to the slope. Nothing too close or too dangerous, but there's about 100-foot stretch that may be a decorative timber guide rail, might be warranted, and we'll show that on the final plan.
Board members, if there's anybody who has anything specific, otherwise we can just open the door. Do you want to... And the increase of setbacks?
Yes. Well, the setbacks have been increased to, I believe, at 45 feet now, where they were 30 feet on the previous set of patients. So, we shifted the whole road south 15 feet to increase the setback.
Anybody?
I just have one small question. I'm a retired school bus driver with a hammerhead at the end, is that big enough for a school bus to turn around?
We've got comments from town staff, and they've asked to make it a little bit wider to accommodate their plows, but we can confirm that it is wide enough for a school bus, it should be, if it's part of the town staff.
Okay, so with that, again, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody who should speak in regard to this, all I'd ask is, well, give us your name and address.
Hi, good evening, my name is Steve Terregino. I live at 361 Coastal View Drive. I represent the homeowners association as the president, and I'm also obviously a resident. I'd like to thank the Hegedorn's Republic of Knowledge, that they're going to be part of the homeowners association, that was a pretty big item for us. The issue I still have is, we had asked them to memorialize that somehow, and, you know, through multiple conversations while we have, and emails, we wanted to come up with some written agreement, and they just essentially refused to sign anything. So, I would like to know more and understand it, since they acknowledged that tonight, that there's going to be the HOA, how binding is that? And we would like, if it's not binding, we'd like the matter tabled until we can formally come up with an agreement between the two parties, the HOAs and the development, that they're going to be the HOA, and they're going to participate, and they're going to buy the rules that they created.
I don't want to keep moping with this thing either.
I agree.
I agree with you, and personally, I think, I thought this was a done deal.
We tried, we tried.
No, we did too.
We met with Stacy. We had our attorney draft an agreement.
We'd met already with them, and the last I heard, Josh, I guess you were briefly there, and the agreement was that it will be turned on homes, so it's good. So, in my opinion, what we could do, it'd be to put in a resolution that the final preliminary approval would be contingent on them becoming part of the HOA for Coastal View. So, that's done, there's nothing else going to happen, no approval unless that's done.
Thank you.
You can't keep screwing around with the same line.
Thank you.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
So, that's my opinion anyway. Anybody else? Okay? Yep, okay. It's got to come to a head, you can't, you know, we're going along with the waterfront and so on and so forth, but it has to be a second agreement.
Okay, so phase five is, if I understand, is we're going to impart the HOA and buy virtue, what you're, this board is doing tonight, is going to make sure that happens. Perfect, thank you.
All right, anyone else we should cover? Steve? All right, anything else? I thought that was, I felt we had it all resolved.
I think it's attorneys signing and filing the documents. I know there's an agreement to be part of the HOA, I can't confirm whether anything's been signed, but I know that's what I've been told as well. So, I think they're fine with that being a part of the resolution.
Okay, great. Then we'll get to that. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Dave Bernard, 375 Coastal View Drive, a resident. I just wanted to get clarification, and they said the land was being turned over, the open space, to the homeowners, and he said some of the homeowners, number one, so I wasn't clear if that's all the lake homeowners, and number two, will those homeowners now be permitted to obtain that land, you know, without restrictions, which was another issue we addressed here a couple of years ago.
And the final, will the homeowners...
Well, I'm a homeowner, I live on the lake. The land behind my house that's on the lake, I don't know if the homeowners association owns. It's my understanding that these new homes, these nine new homes, they're all going to own their block behind the lake, which I don't, and I thought this donating more land or different land for open space was going to give the homeowners along the lake the opportunity then to obtain the block and, you know, and have it without restrictions.
You're talking to current owners.
Excuse me?
You're talking for the current owners.
Correct. Maybe he said some of the owners, so I don't know if it was, you know, there's maybe, I don't know, 25 to 30 owners on the lake right now.
That would be the next, actually, that's the second thing on the agenda for that, so we get into that one too.
Okay.
I was focusing on the, you know, the proposed development, so let's do that one, and then we'll get into that one, you know, once everything's... All right, there, and anybody, any questions or anything? You know, we've gone through it. The agreement was to allow the waterfront, probably all the new ones are waterfront, obviously, to have ownership down to, it goes to where, like the mean-high water then?
That's correct, mean-high water. I'm sorry, mean-low water.
Mean-low water, I'm sorry, okay, mean-low water. All right, now...
Does the last one of the matters show the mean-high water?
It has, yes. And that, the next one that goes to the town, along with the other comments from PRC and our meeting last week, we'll show them.
Okay, let's see, what else we got? The primary, well, we'll be skipping ahead a little bit to current owners, I guess, because their major concern there was to be able to put Revetna in shoreline protection down there, and that was why you foretreated that property, all right? All right, so, this is the start, I guess, so with this, we can move along, you know, that being, instead of being HOA property, it becomes to the individual lots to be the low water. All right, it's a major reduction in the number of units going in there, what was it, 42 units?
35 times.
Was it 35?
So, it's a very large reduction in density.
Yes, so for Seeger, actually, it's way less of an impact.
Correct.
That's like, Seeger was done on the whole thing.
Correct, it was done as a preliminary plan.
Yeah, so, all right, anybody else?
Do we know what the terms are of the open space easement?
They have not been finalized yet, but we will submit to the town for town attorney review, just to make sure it's to the satisfaction. Essentially, no development now or ever will occur in this open space land. The land where the pond is will also be an easement to allow for maintenance, so those specific attorney terms can be submitted to the town attorney for approval.
Did you have a chance to do an overlay to find out boundaries, preliminary approved area?
Based on, based on the resolution, the plan, we saw it, it's what's in front of you now and the remaining land, so this should be the closure to focus on the...
So, boundaries, what you see on this for the open space easement, they are within the boundaries of the original area.
Correct.
We do have a letter from, it's Dorothy Fait, 742 Hightower Way. Josh, you want to rename the record there, so we've got it, regarding Coastal View?
Dorothy Fait, 742 Hightower Way. I was wondering if this subdivision was originally granted to Cluster Development. If so, my concern is that should future homeowners wish to purchase the 50 feet between the original approved lot line and the lake, that the subdivision would no longer have the requisite open space that is allowed for wildlife and pathways. I am also concerned that this lake frontage is a coastal erosion hazard area, and that the HOA has already been granted permits to allow lake access for the subdivision, and that the additional lake frontage should remain the property of the HOA, so no further development can occur closer to the lake. It appears that a retention pond was included as part of the overall open space. If that or the newer homeowners want to purchase the lake frontage, will the development still meet the required open space? But granting this to some homeowners set a precedent. Also, will the lake frontage that orders the property labeled Hegedorn Family LLC remain the property of the HOA and be guaranteed not to be developed, remain a protected area?
Okay, and those comments basically about including the paperwork already, I'm sorry, but we'll enter this into the record also. All right, with that, I guess we're okay with this. What else we have to cover on it at this point for this particular section?
There's just one other question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. To put on the record, the plan to show the NYSCDC natural protection feature here is to 25 foot off of the buffer, can you explain to the record what that is?
Essentially, no disturbance is permitted within that buffer without a permit from the DCC.
And does that extend along with this development and also the water?
Yes, that's correct, and bluff is surveyed during preliminary planning, so any work within that buffer or the bluff or the lake shore would require a permit from the town and DCC.
All right, if there's no further questions, then we'll close the public hearing, bring it back up, if there are any concerns or comments. Pretty much covered what we had, right? All right, need to make a motion, and, actually, this application, I was just looking for preliminary, I guess. In for preliminary, in for preliminary final. Josh, it does say preliminary final to Coastal View, what's outstanding yet?
Well, we need to get the revised plans that reflect all the PRC comments, but it's up to the board.
Okay, so let's do this, let's do preliminary approval, let, get everything all, did you got comments from the county or anybody else here? State, you don't need anything from them?
No.
All right, probably should have the final drawings before we make a final approval. I would, my opinion anyway, what do you guys think? Would you agree? Yeah, this way here, we're not going to be playing catch-up, you know, down the road, okay? All right, so for preliminary approval. Okay, you want, who wants to make something, you want to make it?
Make a motion for preliminary.
Go ahead.
For Coastal View subdivision section five, subject to PRC comments, subject to other credit, which will be the Town of Webster, subject to other comments. As you see here, the requirements are needed. Our approval, so we constructed according to the specification of the Town of Webster. Our roadway construction will be enforced with the specification of the permission set for by the Town of Webster. Also, with the bank compliance, staying to the Town of Webster, by all requirements of any state, county, or town agency, address drainage, drainage signs, landscaping, water management, some storage. All covers are safe, drawing, US 100, and, and this really, this part of the subdivision is included in any HOA, and by any HOA, standards and requirements.
We have the motion, please, sir.
Sir.
Make a motion, please.
Mr. Walter?
Hi.
Mr. Dardina?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Cosell?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Alina?
Hi.
Mr. Bishani?
So, just to clarify, no final tonight, it'll be based on satisfying PRC comments?
Yeah, get all your paperwork, you know, get all your drawings complete, so we've got this thing.
Gotcha.
We're not playing catch-up later on, that's all.
No desire to approve contingent upon satisfying those requirements?
Let's go back, it'll be simple, it'll be painless.
I wonder, Josh, we'll try to get ahead, because we're a week from today, if we can get on the last plane forward?
Yeah, that way your drawings are right up, because there's so many times we've done this, that we've gotten toasted out of there.
Understood.
But, I mean, not by you, all right? Excellent. All right, we're set with that one. Okay, so the second one, go ahead, did you want to add anything?
Amendment Coastal View subdivision coastline properties located on the north side of Coastal View Drive, Epicents, and, yeah, all Epicents located at Coastal View Drive are requesting preliminary final site plan and subdivision approval, where Epicents require the homeowners association land is an extension of their arsenals to Lake Ontario Shoreline, located in WD Waterfront District under the code of Town Webster.
All right, so where are we here? Who wants to speak on the air for you folks, okay? Just give us a rundown on what you want to do, and where you stand on that.
Just kind of, you know better than anybody, I want you to just brief everybody here.
Yes, Steve Terregino, Coastal View, we had processed matters for the board a few years ago, where the back of the lake lots are owned by the HOA, and with the, you know, unprecedented water heights, there's been a ton of erosion, and a number of the homeowners have, you know, started to put retaining walls up to kind of stop the erosion, there's back lands falling into the, into the water, if you will, so this matter here is a request to bring back to the board the ability for the homeowners to purchase the land that was originally HOA land in the back of their homes in order to improve it. Some of these retaining walls are upwards of $50,000, and a lot of homeowners are reluctant to improve property that they don't own, so this request is to respectfully ask that homeowners be given the opportunity to own the land.
I think, and when you guys went, I think this board pretty much agreed with what you proposed, and what's...
Sure.
Now, the issue comes where some want to participate, some don't.
Yes, that's true.
Let's get back with that.
That's true, yes.
All right, we met, weeks ago, I made a suggestion, it's been out of my mind, where that, suppose your house is there, my house is here, the person in the middle of us doesn't want to do it. Suppose you buy half of that front, and I buy half of that front, can we work something like that with you folks? In other words, who says you have to have a straight line to the water, it doesn't? You could own half of the person, oh, I forgot, what is it, 190 foot or something?
They're about, about 100, 120, Stacy?
Whatever, Stacy, you can't...
Some are 85, some are 70.
So, 100 foot, so whatever, so you buy yours, 100 foot, and you buy 50 foot of this person here, I buy 50 foot, plus buy 100 foot, and we cover it. Would that be something that we could get together and work out with you guys? You guys work out, it's your issue, really, I'm just, I'm looking for something to get this thing completely off your back.
I would say that, yeah, it's up to the homeowners, I mean, if they, if those compelled to put the retaining walls up, want to do so with ownership, they really, they should, in my opinion, they should find a way to work together and get that done.
Now, I guess, I don't know, Charlie, they have to buy the thing from the homeowners association, the property, and if you bought it, I can't see the value of that shoreline being worth a whole lot of money, so I don't think anybody's going to be expecting when you put in a, selling their piece, you know, selling, you buying half and I buy half, type thing, you know?
Correct.
I'm looking for something that can say you guys own the whole strip. Is that fair enough?
Individually as homeowners.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
In other words, you own 150 feet, I own 150 feet, the next person owns 100 feet, so, just to absorb the whole piece.
But everybody essentially would have to agree to buy the parcel, then if you had one or two.
Well, the news on what's your homeowners association, you said you're the president?
I am.
All right, is, are all the members of the homeowners association owners here, or is there outside, is the builder, the developer also?
Not anymore, it's just the homeowners now.
Okay, so you have your own rules and regulations, I assume?
We have the rules and regulations that were given to us by Stacy and Brian Hegedorn, the ones that they came up with.
And you have counsel, you have an attorney?
We have, yes, we did.
And I would talk to your attorney about how you go about doing it, I mean, do you think?
Yeah.
Okay.
And... I'm sure you should... I mean, I believe the last time there wasn't enough open space to give us the, all the lakefront owners the opportunity to buy their parcel, there's going to be a little bit of a trade-off, but I don't think everybody was going to be able to participate in buying their lakefront, just because they want open space that, that makes us, they, when they did this recent plan, they opened up some more green space for us, but I still don't think it's enough for every single homeowner to own a lakefront to buy the property.
How did that work out through that square? Do you recall, I know we talked about it?
So, the Hegedorn family is essentially, you know, giving away space to make it open space to trade off. In our calculations, basically, as much as they could give was about 3.1 acres, and that covered everything from the end of section five, so where it's developed right now, back down to the lake access. So, I know the discussion against, on my application, but was whether or not the board would, you know, allow them to do that with, you know, not meeting the open space, preliminary open space requirements.
It may not be legal open space, but sure as hell nothing changing down there, you know what I mean, it's still waterfront property, nobody's going to be building anything down there, still open as far as reality, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, if that much was deducted from the overall original open space, don't know if, you know, that much of a concern, anybody, you guys have a good feeling on that?
Well, I guess to be clear, the only drawings we have are the ones that were submitted in 2018.
Yes.
And they show one, two, three, four, I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight parcels participating in trying to purchase sections of land, covering that park, and shows one, two, three, four, five, six parcels that at the time were not participating in the purchase of those lands. The open space area that is not being transferred to those eight parcels no longer has access. The homeowners association owns that open space, no longer has access to those parcels, and that's not something that you can support.
Yeah, that's true.
The only way that those parcels can be made to maintain access to it is, based on either the description that Tony suggested before, where neighboring parcels essentially purchased the land behind, those who choose not to participate or require permanent easement will go back to the individual pieces that are being left behind, and easement that is written to the homeowners association, so the people in the homeowners association who own that land have the ability to go back and retrieve that parcel.
Yeah, we're not sure the homeowners would be willing to do that, there's, you know, if you ever go back there, there's not a, I'd walk it once, I'd probably never want to walk it again.
Regardless, it is land that is owned by the homeowners association, and the proposed subdivision that we have before us is not allowing the people of the homeowners association access to their own, so they don't really have access to that to put a permanent easement on parcels of these, or sell all the land also, it's only, it's not going to have a patchwork.
They'd be individual pieces like that, they're leaving the land alive, and you can't do that, so.
Right.
So, what, I mean, we're willing to work with you folks, but what can we do, you know, how can we make this happen for you? You know, I think, I think if you want to take this, if you speak, I'm sorry, no, no, go ahead, I'm looking for some help on this.
Can I speak to Mr. Bishani?
Sure.
So, I think the first...
Your own set, though.
Yeah.
So, Tom Polito, and I'm one of the homeowners that came before you before, and I think what you described... And I think what you described, the two options, the first option, I think, is what we're looking for. And that is the authority to convey each parcel individually, west and east. It's really going to stay as open space, but it's going to be owned by the individual owners along there. That's what I think everyone is in agreement with. We have discussions with the homeowners, and I think we want to do what's fair to everybody down there, which is one for all, all for one. We all want to be able to own it individually. The suggestion you gave, if one person didn't want to buy it, and the other two step forward to own half of it, I think would be a solution to that concern about landlot. I don't think landlot is going to be an issue at all. I think, my impression is, everybody wants to own it along there. So, keeping it as open space, but owned individually, I think is a solution. The second option, not so much. So, I think we satisfy you, because we're trying to do the same thing that the prior applicant did for individual ownership as a part of it. So, in answer to your question, I think this satisfies everybody that's here. Don't just let the people west of the path have individual ownership. West and east of the path, where we're really going to be keeping open space. And it's going to be pretty much the way it is right now, except for how it's needed. Rest of our mission to individually convey each of those parcels along the water. Is that, so I think the answer is yes, which you proposed in the beginning. I think we're all willing to go with. And I think that as long as we have your blessing, or each of those lines can be drawn down. If by chance, one person doesn't want to, your solution, I think, is going to, we're going to be all over that. We would agree with that as a solution as a part of not having anything landlot. I really convey, same as what the developers doing for themselves as a part of it. I'm sorry, Mr. Khoshani here.
No, I just say, I woke up in the middle of the night with that one.
Yeah, it's brilliant, I, yeah.
No, something's got to happen, and we're in agreement. I mean, you want to fix that shoreline. It's a steep cliff. It isn't going to get better on its own, that's for sure. Land isn't going to build again. And by putting, we're not that down there, it needs it, it absolutely needs it. We don't know what's going to happen next year again, you know?
Thank you.
With the new law, so we'll, we'll do the best we can with it. But again, try and do it this way. Okay, yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm from Lizzie, I live at four oh three Costa View.
You're a little closer to the mic if you could please, I haven't, there you go.
My name is Pat, from Lizzie, I live at four oh three Costa View. I've been there since 2011. Mentioned about problems of some people would buy the land, some people wouldn't, that need landlot. Let me read something that was put out by the directors of the association in January 12th, 2011. Trying to clarify planting and structural use restrictions pertaining to lakeside open space. They also stated that open space along the lake shall be the sole use and enjoyment of the homeowner who's likely to join that land. And that this area is not meant to be used by any other person in the community. So, even though it's open space, it can acknowledge that backyards in most of these homes are very small. And even if you include the open space, it's still a small area. Also, it acknowledges that this area is fragile. That, that no one want, that the developer and estate and the town doesn't want this new damage, and you don't want tons of people or tons of activity on this area. Again, that's the reason why they're restricting to, to the owners of that property, of people who have a house. The other thing, the HOA comes out, it's a 1011 in their HOA document, says, "HOA assumes no liability or responsibility for safety of individuals on the bluff." And that it simply states that each plot owner is solely responsible for safety and liability. So, in essence, the HOA washes their hands of this open space. And further washes their hands of the open space of land. In 2018, when we had, we were having a lot of erosion, some due to the lake and some due to other causes, the homeowners on the lake went to the HOA and asked them, studied the problems and find out how to stop this. And the HOA turns around and said, "No, we're not going to study this problem because we're not going to fix it." So, the HOA basically washed their hands of this. And that is the reason, 2018, fifteen homeowners came to these people and said, "We want to own this because we need to fix this." And it was tabled for various reasons. Now, developer wants to go ahead and give the ownership to this lakeside property to the new homeowners. And the reason why they would do that is that they're going to have the same problems that we have. They're going to have erosion problems that's not going to go away, and they're going to have HOA that washed their hands of it. So... In 2018, the people, I mean, three homes, came in 2018 and wanted to own it because they wanted to put rebetments on. They didn't get the ownership, but they did put the rebetments on. Now, three years later, we still got erosion problems, we still have an HOA that's not going to do anything. And there's four more people, this time they're on the east side of the access path. They're going forward, and they're going to spend, including myself, are going to spend two hundred thousand dollars to put rebetments on. We don't own it, if you'd like to own it. I think the board, the HOA, and are doing the right thing and let these people own the property. They're the only ones interested in saving this property, because they have a vested interest, but they live there. So, I question, my, my recommendation to this group, do the right thing and let this thing take place. Let these people own the property, that they're, that they're the only ones who will do to try and fix this. And we've got, we talked about open space, we don't have enough open space. I don't really care how much open space is it. This open space has already been designated open space. We should be interested in saving where we already designated it open space. That's it.
Eric, thank you. I think you see the board pretty much agree with what you're saying. Okay, anyone else question the, on that or anything else? Twenty-one, twenty-two?
Oh, hang on a second.
Go ahead, twenty-two. Oh, Jen, go ahead, just a second.
John Gonzalez. If the villa owners also want to participate in owning their frontage, and it's only a matter of a couple acres of additional green space that somehow has to come in, is there some way we could get some kind of variance so that the green space that we're providing will be able to be stretched across the entire bluff so that both the single-family residents and the villas will all be able to participate and buy all the lakefrontage and then have the ability to take care of any erosion problems?
I think, I think, Jen, I think the board is pretty much in agreement with the whole project. Yes, individual owners and the waterfront. How you get there, I have got the final answer to that. That's what we have to get. If people would be willing to buy it, they buy it. As far as calling it open space of that project, it's been how many years now? Fifteen years you guys have been working on that? Is, is the lack of that even being considered as open space? If that's taken off the table, it doesn't really matter. It's still open space, in my opinion. Technically, it doesn't meet what was required when the project started, you know, acres of open space, a fifty percent, so it's like... Does it matter? It's still open space.
I'd say we've got a win-win situation if all the villa owners, all the single families, if they all want to buy that, and we're, and we're blocking over the fact that we can't come up with another two acres.
No, and that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so that hopefully, the town will have some flexibility to address that.
Can you, Jen, how can you, can you guys come up with something with, you know, with an attorney or something to... Give us a piece of paper of what you're proposing to do that we can say, yes. Try and get you variance and whatever we got to do from that point.
What do you mean, what do you want?
I don't want to...
We can do it, it's just a matter of...
What we need is an application.
What's that?
What we need is an application that actually shows what you're doing.
Yes.
From them?
It's prepared, yeah, from the homeowners' association. We need an application that is submitted, that shows what you're actually doing, how the property lines were just modified to make maintenance. Or to transfer the lands that we discussed earlier.
Yes, sure.
That they have to cover the entire thing.
Be great for everyone. The homeowners' association would be very, very happy to probably release all the issues.
We're all in the same room, but we don't know how to agree that.
Well, there should be some kind of way to do it, because it makes a lot of sense. Everyone wins that way.
Yeah.
You just need to reset a little device.
Yeah, just, that's probably the...
Shows how it's going to be reset.
Then we've got something we're working with.
Yeah, but right now, it doesn't, uh-oh.
Okay? Yep, thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Could I propose to use the existing map? That only designates twelve of the people? Provisionally approve the map along the lines that are drawn, with, subject to a follow-up map? No, here's what I'm saying though. The map that you had is a part of the original proposal. Already has all of those lines drawn on it. And it only has, I think, twelve. Two of them are to the east of the path, the other ones are to the west. But the idea that you're talking about, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that you want to see those lines drawn from the sides of the property down to the waterfront. Provisionally, you have the map without the names inserted into those other blocks. And we would submit a map that shows each of the individual names of everyone that's going to be owning it. And the exception, if someone didn't want to buy in front of them, we would do that thing you talked about before. Otherwise, you have exactly what the map is, with the exception of the names not being in those other ones.
Trouble is though, with that time, you'd have to have the lines drawn right to the water. And then, if you took, like, you went through the four, you took a piece, and I took a piece, that line would jab over. You have to show each individual outline of a lot. And that would have to be shown. You wouldn't be able to come in with this with show here per se, because that's showing landlot pieces, I'd say, and that would never get approved.
Right, so what I'm saying is, that's the blueprint for it, but we would make those changes according to what you're telling us.
Yeah.
And you're, you're all in agreement that that is going to be fine?
If you took this drawing right there and just showed those lines, this and here, you're taking this half of this, he's taking the other half of this and so on, however you guys want to buy it, work it out with the HOA. The deal here is going to be to have to work it out with your HOA.
Well, this has already been discussed with the HOA.
Okay.
We've already had meetings about this. And those lines going right along the lot lines are what we're asking permission to do. And you're just asking for a map that shows that. Otherwise, otherwise, you're in agreement with what that, that's what it could be. If we run into a challenge because one person doesn't want it, or two people don't want to buy a particular lot, we're going to do that thing where we adjust the line. But otherwise, the lines that are on there, with the exception of the names being in front of each of those spots, is the, is the same map that we would be using?
You're talking about just modifying and trying to help? Yeah, I don't think it's going to be a big issue.
No, you have to submit an actual plan that shows what you are doing.
Consistent with what I'm saying.
It is consistent with what you're saying, that's prepared.
Okay, you just, you just show the modification to what you're doing here, showing where the lot lines were based. And the division of those, of course, to the top.
Could we get like they did, provisional subdivision approval? I'm sorry. Preliminary subdivision approval, based upon, based upon what we have today, and then submit for final subdivision?
No, no, no.
The actual map?
Because there's, there's a running right straight, there's, there's, isn't existing yet, you know what I mean? And that's, their drawing is what's being approved.
So, this is just administrative, otherwise you guys are all, and many women are all on, on board with what we're saying?
We're good with doing it, you just got to follow with, you know, what you're proposing to show us.
And we can submit it for next meeting as well, that would be...
If you can, if you can show your drawings and get it on the schedule, I guess, ask Josh if you...
Yeah. Tuesday. If you can get drawings to prepare, there's something that can be filed with Monroe County. Drawings are prepared by a licensed architect, or licensed plans are there by an engineer. Drawings that are required for us a little, you have, for anything you want to put forward. And it has to show exactly what you're doing.
Costage has all your paperwork, so you can just keep going, you know, go on the same line?
Thank you.
Okay? Alright, so what we'll do then, we'll table it until the next meeting, and you can come in showing your revisions. That work for you guys? That work for everyone? Alright, come on, something.
Two weeks is going to be enough. Alright. There's two weeks is going to be enough time for you to have drawings prepared, submitted and go to the office.
Finalize. If Costage has the prior plan and updates those for us, maybe, I don't know what their availability is. They are able to get the sponsors' stuff through in a couple of weeks. I'm not sure ours could be done in that same time period as well. It's the same map, you're just drawing different lines on it, right?
I would want to reflect current owners of all, because there, three of the properties have changed ownership since the original application. So, any revised map should reflect the current owners of all properties.
Getting a thumbs up from Costage just a couple of weeks away. Or Richie, Mr. Richie.
Call me tomorrow. Alright, whatever, you guys, we'll table it to the next meeting, and if that isn't going to work, then we'll just go to the next one, that's all.
Alright.
Alright, so we need a motion to table this application to the...
Room fifteen.
Fifteen is what? Need a motion? I'll get a motion to table it.
Sorry?
Oh, favor? Okay, well, good, alright, good. First up, you got it, at least we're on track now. Okay?
Thank you.
Good luck, see you guys.
Five ninety-five, County Line Road accessory structure located at five ninety-five County Line Road, at Mason requesting preliminary final site plan approval associated with the construction of fifty-two foot by forty-eight foot accessory structure on a six point two acre site. Located in an L large lot, some frame residential district, under Porterville Park.
Evening, everyone. My name's Emma Oaks. I work for Costage Engineering as a project manager with a background in landscape architecture. I'm here representing my client, Elizabeth Mason of T W B Enterprises LLC, who owns the property at five ninety-five County Line Road. Tonight, I'm here seeking preliminary and final site plan approval for a site plan modification to a previously approved plan from 2018. Before I kind of give an overview of the site, I'd like to pass out a couple of handouts here, is that's all right? Alright, so I'll just go over the site plan briefly. So, this is in the large lots zoning district proposing a residence that's just under 3,000 square feet, which is similar to the previously approved plan. There's a driveway curb cut off of County Line Road that's been modified from the previously approved plan. And the driveway goes back as asphalt toward the west side of the property. Moving westward, it turns into a gravel drive which leads to an accessory structure that's about 365 feet away from County Line Road, set back further than the northern neighbor's garage slash accessory structure. So, the accessory structure is just under 2,500 square feet and its height is about 30 feet, which is 10 feet taller than what's allowed per code. Back in May, we went to the zoning board and we were granted a height variance for the structure. The use of the structure is for half of a regulation sized basketball court. We previously tried to propose an accessory structure that was much larger than 2,500 square feet to fit a full regulation basketball court, however, the code doesn't allow for that, so we've gone back and come up with a solution to do half of the basketball court. Now, if you look at the elevation on the first page of the handout I handed you, the section elevation, you'll see the primary residence in the center and then if you look back off to the right-hand side, you'll see a dark black line and pointing to that is an arrow for a proposed accessory structure. The elevation of the roof of the proposed accessory structure is about one foot lower than the elevation of the proposed primary structure. So, if you review the plans, you'll see the site has been raised significantly from the existing grade that's out there today. That's to accommodate the septic field to the west of the primary residence. But we've taken advantage of that for the accessory structure to make a grade, you know, the, getting all mixed up here. So the proposed residence is about 24 feet tall, its highest root peak. It sits about 78 feet above, or 78 feet above the finished floor of the accessory structure. The accessory structure is about 30 feet, do some simple math, comes down to about one foot in elevation difference. So from the roadway at County Line Road, going back westward along the property, you would not see the accessory structure towering over the primary residence, it would actually appear lower and push back further. In terms of buffering for the neighbors on the north and south side of the property, we're providing a deciduous and evergreen vegetated buffer of trees to help visually buffer the view of the proposed accessory structure. And lastly, the context of the area, there are numerous large accessory structures in this large lots zoning district in this area. I have a series of addresses if you are all interested in hearing about those. So, I don't believe that this is out of context for this area and I believe we're trying to mitigate the visual impacts of a structure of this size by setting it back further, visually buffering it with vegetation and utilizing the elevation change to our advantage. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
How tall are the trees?
The trees are between, I believe, 30 and 80 feet tall, it just depends on the type of tree. So the trees that are closer toward the road are between 30 and 40 feet taller, river verges and they sit kind of in swales which might be a little bit wetter areas. Edgeing back further, the trees get taller. The tree that is furthest back toward the accessory structure is actually existing. I'm proposing to preserve that tree, so that way there's kind of an immediate visual buffer of a mature tree existing on the site when the structure is built while these other trees grow up and mature over time.
Only variance needed was just for the height then, right?
Yes.
Okay, you take that, you work with that. Anybody here, again, this is a public hearing, if there's anyone who should speak to the board, that's. Is that, okay. Are there anybody with issues? Pretty straightforward.
Just one thing I'm trying to clarify from this one. The applicant is Elizabeth Mason, but it's, it's H O S, T W B Enterprises, and what is T W B Enterprises?
It's, so T W Enterprises is Elizabeth and her two brothers, the T W B are their initials and they all own this property and Elizabeth is building her residence here. Does that answer?
I just wanted to get the consistency.
Sure, yes, yeah, it's all we do.
So the use is for personal use, so?
Yes.
Okay, that level of storage or anything like that?
No.
All right, anybody? Questions?
Oh, I'm not scared.
What's that?
I go by that area all the time.
It's bad, it's been bad. Well, opposed to public hearing, we were back to something. Derek, you wanna do a super audience?
Just one last question, there is a, like an overhang outside of it?
No, the plans that were submitted from the foreign architect, foreign designer, were just typical plans, there will not be an overhang. No, we, we had that question with the zoning board as well.
Yeah.
Show town laws right here.
Okay.
So town laws are planned for consideration, we have Elizabeth Mason, Mason, constructing a senior level residence in a 52 foot by 48 accessory structure, about 6.2 acre parcel having S D L number 06.01-1-68 located in 595 County Line Road in the L large lots in the residential district. The zoning board classifies proposed action to be a type 2 action under the site act 617.5 C 11 and 12. I'm seeing there are no follow-up review regulations and therefore it's not subject to. Second.
Omar?
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Gardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixal?
Aye.
Mr. Kozel?
Aye.
Mr. Martha?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Mr. Khoshani?
Aye.
Will they approve, I'll make a, I'll make a motion for will they approve for this petition? The applicant has received the necessary variances and the project conforms to section 22536 of your accessory bill lines for the use. That covers everything, there's really no other variables as well.
Mr. Khan, will we be able to get final approval, the same thing as well?
Final approval?
Yes, final.
Yeah, but we gotta do.
Put it on my first, oh, you do.
Our attorney is pretty fussy, he makes the.
I apologize, don't let me interrupt you again.
He's got his train, I've tried it and it didn't ever work, it never did the more, I should say.
All right, I apologize.
Yeah, no, so, so I'll make a motion that we approve the project at 595 County Line Road as presented. Make that subject to conforming with chapter 225-36 under accessory bill lines. The applicant's received its necessary variances, okay, that would be a.
Second.
Mr. Khoshani?
Aye.
Mr. Mixal?
Aye.
Mr. Gardina?
Aye.
Mr. Kozel?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Martha?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
And for final approval, you want that too, huh, okay. We're easy today, can we talk? We'll make, we'll make a motion for a final approval, subject to the same requirements of temporary significant construction has to commence within one year of this date, June 1st, 2022. Yep, it's for use, just for personal use? Okay, that's it, check.
Mr. Khoshani?
Aye.
Mr. Kozel?
Aye.
Mr. Gardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixal?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Martha?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
Aye.
Yeah, you're all set now.
Thank you.
Just for what it's worth here, your drawings and everything, total completed application.
Fantastic.
Very nice, you did a good job.
Thank you all so much, I'm reading.
Thank you.
Cheers, bye. The proposal's up here, signage located 915 County Line Road. Is a sign approved to allow one panel to apply special building mount sign and swap out the existing panels on three monument signs for the present day partnerships for a 919 L large lots located in C High Intensive Community District under the color followers. Yes, sir?
Yes, my name's Karen Toonsen with Rock Signs, we're proposing the new Sephora signage on the C old building.
So the only real change is putting that Sephora sign?
Yes.
On the front there?
Yes.
Signs in the back, I'm rereading the signs, they're just colds.
Just colds in the back.
Cold sign, it's still a cold sign.
Yep, just the same cold sign on the back.
The change is there, monument sign.
Yes.
Same spot.
It's the same spot, yep, we surveyed the existing panels to even place some brand new ones.
Anybody any concerns?
On page seven of the application, appears to be more than just a sign. It also looks like modifying the facade of the building to have some Sephora logo style.
As far as the sign is concerned, it's just gonna be a separate sign. I'm sure that there will be a general contractor who will be constructing Sephora A C M feature panel that's gonna go there, they deal with all the colds, but I don't think that's a, that's a sign or anything.
The application says it's modification. You go back to the application, there it is, it's on page seven. It shows the existing entrance and so it shows the Sephora logo, zebra spray, and straightened out. It's really more than just a sign, it's putting this.
Yeah, okay, I see it, I didn't even see that. That project, when that project came in initially, you know, years ago, there was a lot of detail in the, what we wanted and what we looked for and everything else. I think you should, I think you got the point there. This Sephora sign, I don't have an issue with that, the black and white stripe holes, I think that should be taken out of it.
Wouldn't that be up to the builder? We, we're not.
No, that's up, that's up to the board to prove what you're doing with the building, because.
Yeah, the sign coming, so I wouldn't be installing that or doing any of that.
Okay, then we'll just put it in a resolution that it's, we're including the sign, but the tiger stripes are not considered as part of the application.
Who prepared this?
Is that?
They're not, they didn't, you know, they're on the floor of the show. Who's application?
The, the sign application is from Rock Signs, the proposal was put together by a national sign company called A G I. They isolate all the goals for joint members, so the.
The concern I got when we were running this before out here is that we've told them they were gonna prove something, we're going to need this thing out, they go ahead and they put it in there anyway. Because the person who's doing the score does not put forth an application to do it, you just assume they can or not.
No, that's, that's all.
So, well, it shows up on the sign application, it may not have anything to do with your particular work system.
Correct.
It is proposed work system.
So, when, because I'm assuming there's gonna be all sorts of infrastructure, you said the building as well to add a Sephora area, is that not, like they wouldn't have to get a permit for that?
Yes, they just need a building.
So if they need a building permit, wouldn't that be addressed under that permit?
Not necessarily.
Should it be? No, because that's just dealing with interior, this exterior is, to the jurisdiction of the.
The, so, so that part, you're saying the black and white stripes on there, that's.
That's not anything that we are proposing to install, we would be mounting to that, so generally, the general contractor would do the construction on the building and then mount the sign to it in a day?
Well, we can do one of two things, one, we can, we can approve just the sign provided they eliminate the black and white stripes. The, the rest of the entrance remains as it is.
Okay.
Or we can table it until we give a, the answer from them, if they're willing to accept that.
I think that accepting it, disregarding the black and white stripes is the best thing and then, you know, we can give that back to them if they wanna do something about it, then they can.
Well, that's what it is, the rest is all white, so.
The writing indicates.
What's it, Derek?
The, the general contractor would be doing the writing part of this, which is the renovated facade, as indicated on page seven. So the renovation of the facade would be done before you do your work?
Correct, sir.
All right. Yep, yep. Why don't we, why don't we just have them modify this, show us what, 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 what would be something we're questioning? Then move it down, come back for the sign and that. Everything else is okay, but that's gonna be the issue here. Okay. I also got, I also question that. The top part, Sephora, that's a black background? Yeah. Is that what you're gonna, are you gonna do that whole black background?
We wouldn't do the installation of the black background either, it would just be the individual letters that are mounted to it.
They're just putting a Sephora on the, the side of it. Just, all right, let's do that. Make a motion to table a sign for colds. What, next meeting, okay?
Sure.
All right, we started for June 15.
On second.
Hey, Mr. Khoshani?
Aye.
Mr. Kozel?
Aye.
Mr. Gardina?
Aye.
Mr. Mixal?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Martha?
Aye.
Mr. Arena?
We should probably give a reason, so the reason we're modifying, we're tabling it, is just to the opportunity to modify it back to a the original design with just the name over the top without changing features of the.
So, no changes in nature at all, so even if they wanted to propose just black with no stripes? Or if they had other packages that they used in other places?
Well, I, I, I should bear these things to like McDonald's, you know, they used to have big arch and all crazy stuff. But that's our logo, we'd say, yeah, well.
Well, the other reason I say that is because currently, the way the building is laid out, it really wouldn't accept a sign in that area?
See, I was here when that was approved, and we spent a lot of time on that. You know, and laying out all those buildings and the designs and so on and so forth.
Okay.
To modify it a little bit or something, make a change, put a sign up, yeah, no problem, but this, this wasn't, in my opinion, this wouldn't get attracted at all.
Well, it's just, the, the feature won't accept a sign, there's no blocking there, like there, you need something to attach to.
If you wanted to put the sign with the black on it, I personally, I don't have an issue with that, I would leave the rest alone.
So, possibly just the top piece and not?
Exactly.
The side pieces?
Yep.
That, that'd work for me.
Leave it alone and just change, just put the sign.
I guess one other thing to follow up on.
What's that?
One thing I'd think to follow up on this is a conversation that Josh and Kevin were having about just basing the, kind of the rotations of the inside of the building. Is colds plus Sephora the new company, or is it partnership?
I'm surprised that you guys haven't gotten word of this before the sign is coming, to be honest.
Because what I'm going with this too is that, is this two signs, one for two different businesses on this one building? It seems to me that something's come up before.
Well, the sign could have, the sign, you know, a building could have two different signs, two different, two different signs that are boring, but that's the issue.
Oh, the co- location.
The, the main issue is you guys don't like how it looks?
Yeah, it's the appearance of it there with the...
You personally just don't like it?
Yeah.
And then everybody doesn't like it, or something? Nobody likes it?
No, not that's good for the project.
Let's, let's put it that way. There's not enough people liking it, describing the both.
Oh, I'm, I'm personally interested now. I'll do whatever I'm told to do.
Yeah, just ask, ask them if, you know, you'll come back in under fifteen, fifteen.
I'm fifteen, if you got it.
Ask them to modify the, the design of that front, just with the name of the, of the rest of the wall.
You got it. So, and what if they had proposed, um, a white panel that the sign would mount to? Would that be something that, would you think accepted?
So can you start and say, what's the relationship between those businesses? Is it one company or is it two companies?
As I understand it, Coles is a company that sells clothes, and Sephora is a company that sells perfume, so I can see how they can be related. Yeah, I think that's...
No, no, it's a national.
Yeah, I realize.
But no, I, I think the issue is whether it's one business or not directly.
Correct.
The purposes of consistency, planning where it's been going for years, you wanna see if actually it's one business or if it's a second business.
It's completely integrated within the Coles. It's just a product line that Coles partnered with Sephora.
Yeah.
Now they're rebranding all of their locations all around Monroe County to the same sign.
So like, will the, will the Victor Coles and the Henrietta Coles, will they have the black striping, the zebra, is there anything else?
I guess comparison would be, you could go to, go to a shoe store, um, and then they advertise, uh, Nikes on their window, or they got a sign on their thing, Nike, what do you do with that? Still, still the original shoe store, right?
Makes sense.
I don't, I don't see that as an issue.
So where do you see it on the white panel?
I prefer it to be molding above, or whatever you wanna call that, uh, to stay white. The facade to stay white, not the black. Not white or black.
Well, to put a sign there, you would have to install some sort of panel to attach it to, because the building does not have blocking in that definite area. If the panel was white, would that be something that would be accepted? That way the sign could physically attach to it and be wired?
What would be the difference if you just left everything the same?
I don't know. There's, there's just nothing structural there to mount the sign to.
See, this one's all white over here. If this stayed the same as the other entrances, the western entrances?
Mm-hmm.
Both were the same, and then you just changed the letters to black, not the white background?
As long as they could install a white panel there?
Yeah.
Then yeah. That would, that would be perfect by me.
I don't see that being an issue.
I just wanna make sure that we can physically put it there, because as it is now, it will not accept a sign.
Well, they got the picture, if you, if you just, you would list it, put a modification in there.
So, I'll just have them do a drawing up, showing a white panel, no zebra strapping on the columns, leave the columns alone, and the sign imposed?
Yep.
And that's what you do.
That would be fine.
And you want, you want the banding on both entrances, so they match, even though one will have a sign and one will not? Is that correct?
I don't think that's, uh, that's a big issue, is it? That's not an issue.
Okay. All right? Sounds good?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
See you in a couple weeks.
Coles Jiffy Lube located 1161 and 1171 Ridge Road in Madison, Fort Jackson Road at Kent. Bowler Engineering is requesting clear site time review associated with construction of 3,000 square foot Jiffy Lube multi-care facility on the coast from 8.4 acres consisting of above referenced addresses. And located in a MC address, vertical district under the color colors.
Good evening, for the record, I'm Karen Maginowski from Bowler Engineering, and I'm here with John Moore from Guggenheim Development Services LLC this evening. It's been a while since we've been in front of the board. We were first here in February to introduce this project, so I'll go through a brief overview again of the project and an update on where we've been since February. We're here for the proposed redevelopment of the land in the southeast corner of Ridge Road and Jackson Road here in the town. We are also proposing a lotline adjustment to create a 0.84 acre lot for the project, and the remainder of the land would remain with the current owner, which is the rest of this parcel outline you like here. We are proposing a 3,000 plus or minus square foot Jiffy Lube multi-care facility that would face perpendicular to Ridge Road with the bays facing the side to Jackson Road. So cars would enter from the parking lot side and exit towards Jackson Road, as you can see on the plan here. The facility will have four bays and 12 parking spaces. We are proposing a full access to Jackson Road and a limited access to Ridge Road, which would restrict left turns out due to the proximity to the intersection and the lanes that are in the road there. The site is in the medium intensity commercial district. We went in front of the zoning board and obtained the necessary use variance for the project for the proposed use, as well as the four necessary area variances as well, and all of those were obtained. So now we're here to return to the board. We've developed full engineering site plan drawings, uh, which were submitted, and, uh, that included everything from demolition, which involves the demolition of four structures closest to the intersection, uh, utilities, all of which are available there today, and we will plan to reuse or propose new connections as necessary, uh, stormwater design and landscaping as well, which included some street trees up along the street front of this as necessary. Um, we also have proposed building elevations. I apologize, my printer's not the best, but, uh, this is actually a nichiha brick for the building, and the color of that product is crimson, so it will be much more of a true brick red than what is printed here. Um, but all four sides will have that treatment, as all four are relatively visible, being up at the intersection, when you have different approaches from each road. Uh, we wanted to enhance the building on all four sides. There will be a stone veneer, a waste pot along the base of the building on all four sides as well, uh, with a deep red canopy on the bays and the orange, uh, brown bronze canopy along the entrance ways and the windows as well. If you could, I can go through which side faces each street, uh, or we can get into that later, but, um, we have those available and submitted as well for review. We did receive a PRC comments, which were very minor and technical in nature, and I see no problems addressing those, and I believe the last piece is that we were waiting on the county review, which unless that came in today, I understand we might have to wait for that, and, uh, go with just a regular preliminary vote this evening if possible. So we're here to answer any questions and, uh, comments as well.
Well, the only, well, one of them is, is from the PRC, is, you know, you're showing the island in the center on the exit is pretty more of a flare and those things, because we've got somewhere, it didn't mean nothing, people still went...
We'll make sure that's there. We did make a modification to it, so we might not have had the most recent plan, or maybe it wasn't clear, but we'll make sure that that's...
I mean, it's gotta be, if you look at white ones up at the front of the home, there's just quite white, and we've got some that are much narrower, and people asking, oh, you're gonna... So it's more a deterrent. We addressed some, you saw the PRC evidence, right?
Correct.
As far as the project, I think you did a good job with that. We got that, uh, the drainage, that's been all resolved. Anything else? Anybody?
There is an email coming from the South Carolina project.
What's that?
There was an email sent from the South Carolina project.
Yeah, uh, uh, that's the one, I have Josh, we edited it, it's the same way. It's really detailed, well, it's all engineering detail, well... Okay, anybody any concerns, questions?
I, I mentioned before, my concern is going on Jackson Road, trying to try to cross it. If you look at it, it's 179, um, approximately, to the, to be able to cross out, like, I go on this all the time, I live down the road, turn left across the traffic there, the traffic piles out there, north out, but just a point, maybe just ingress and regress out, going north, but... There is, that's not...
What else you do?
Okay, on Jackson Road...
You get, you get in and out there.
Yeah, but you're gonna, because it's not direct...
So you're going south on Jackson Road?
Um, no, yeah, someone wants to cross over the road and go south.
Okay.
They had to cross across, go across the traffic, it's back up there or through there. Just like what they have on Ridge Road though, they have ingress and regress that's controlled. So if you control it going, when you're going out of Jackson Road, you would want that to go, go towards the north, so you're directing traffic going out of Jackson Road to the north.
And that?
Can't cut, can't cut across Jackson and turn left and go south.
I think that's kinda tough to do, isn't it? You're doing restricting that. I mean, if, if somebody's going down Jackson Road and they can't, and they can't, they can't turn south, if they're, if they're in the parking lot waiting to get out, at least there isn't a line of traffic going out, so it would be one car at a time, once it moved, so it's not, it's not having traffic going out.
Yeah, it looks like to you, there wouldn't be enough room to be left inside to get a bigger turn, you know, directionality.
Because now if you steer over north, how they, how do they get up Jackson Road? You know? You can, no, I don't think you can really change that.
All right, just a point, that I wanna make in terms of...
Yeah. There was talk, I don't remember if we had, PRC, regarding westbound at Ridge Road. Okay, let me see, hold on a minute, there's a center lane there on Ridge Road going to Jackson Road. If you're going west, so you can turn left onto Jackson Road there?
Yes.
Right? Okay. So if they, in that lane, they can make a left turn to go in to Jiffy Lube?
They can take a left onto Jackson and then a left into...
Well, no, forget Jackson Road, no. You're going west on Ridge Road, coming like from the village of West, so you're going west?
Yes.
You're coming up to Jackson Road? Okay?
Yep.
And then there's a center turning lane there for Jackson Road. I'm gonna guess that's big enough to be able to make a, a turn, a left turn into Jiffy Lube?
That's correct.
Dude, okay, okay. All right, so that arrow you've got coming in does allow for westbound traffic. We show an arrow in the road there.
I thought that entrance was like, can only be right turn into the parking lot, left, right turn going out.
So turning into the site from Ridge is a full movement, you can turn a right or a left?
Going in.
Going in?
Yeah.
Yes. But the left out on the bridge is what's restricted.
Correct, that's the limit.
Yeah, so the, that left turn lane already has those arrows, we picked up on our survey.
Uh-huh.
Um, so the worst thing that would happen is, you know, they have to wait to turn left, you know, from that center lane in the site, but...
Personally, I think that's laid out okay. I mean, I, I mean, we did discuss this in the PRC meeting, you know, highway department and everything, so everybody was, you must have, yeah. So it's left turn westbound going in, uh, coming out on the Ridge Road, it's only right turn going out.
Correct.
Jackson Road is in and out.
Correct.
All right, yeah, there, yeah, it shows the turning lane right there. That turning lane is quite long, too.
Yes.
Make a left turn onto Jackson Road, so that gives people getting into that lane, that's liking the road, still get the opportunity to go back. All right. Um, anything, anybody else? Uh, okay, again, this is a public hearing, I, this was going here for that. All right, we'll close the public hearing, we'll look back, anybody, anything more consistent? There's a letter, why don't you read that letter, suppose under the record, Josh, please?
Yeah, this was received from Dorothy Faith up 742 Pike Power Way, in regards to the Jiffy Lube proposed project. I would like to know if left turns from Jackson Road into the driveway on Jackson would be diverted due to the possibility that traffic would back up onto Ridge Road. If a car needs to wait to be able to make that left turn, I would also like to know the size of the trucks that would be delivering supplies or picking up the usual cords.
And those trucks, would be just standard oil, recycled, like, on the side?
Yeah.
I mean, they're not truck, they're trailer.
Much larger than a lot of trucks. And as far as, you know, this is an extremely low traffic volume, so, you know, the on the two car...
And that's basically why we level up with the pool of those there, because of the lot of trailer. All right, we got a little... All right, um... I have to do a secret, Derek, wanna do a secret right now? You can hear this?
Yeah, just a few questions.
Yeah, okay.
I noticed on the PRC count, that's in two locations. Sort of department says need to complete chemical survey, and it's lots longer to be actualized, so we don't have to come up with a survey. What type of chemicals are anticipated to be used?
So...
You like oil and then...
Yeah, just typical oil, I mean, oil changes is the majority of it. Um, so waste oil, which is picked up by, um, a preferred vendor. We can supply a full list if you'd like, but that's, that's the major one.
So waste oil, raw oil itself, you know, do you need solvents or?
Again, just for the record, John Moore, Guggenheim Development LLC. Relative to the chemicals or, or things that are used on site, so, uh, the oil stored in bulk, uh, steel tanks in the, uh, in the basement of the facility, we essentially created a concrete vault, uh, the secondary containment in the basement, where the mechanics also work under the vehicles. Um, and then there's a waste oil, it's a closed system, waste oil, uh, is retrieved from the site at a regular interval. The trucks on site are no bigger than a home heating oil tank, uh, I'm sorry, home heating oil truck, uh, and then obviously a garbage truck are probably the two largest vehicles on site. But nothing by way of heavy solvents or any of that kind of thing, it's really just oils and food, which relative to the vehicle's service. Again, all stored in the basement in a, what essentially amounts of a closed concrete vault with penetrations or anything for secondary containment.
So being a base for the secondary containers, that portion of facility is subject to this corporate action, huh?
Right, so we have a file of bulk storage per application, uh, as well, that'll be reviewed by our new DMC.
Will that be for both the raw and the waste oil?
I believe it's both of those. And we can provide, if, if the board would like, you can give a more detailed, uh...
No, just... Um, do you guys change transmission fluid or brake fluid or anything like that?
Um, I believe we do some of that stuff, some of the flushing of the vehicles, but again, I, I can provide, I don't wanna speak out of term, because I've got all the literature on it that I can provide, so, um, I believe some of that is done on some vehicles, but again, the vast majority of our business is oil change. But again, the vast majority of our business is oil change.
Sort Department got in all this at the PRC too. This is something they know after a whole other day. And they make sure that.
Well, you don't want that suddenly.
They, they, they expect this as it's being killed and everything else. It's a, it's a control process.
A lot of the separators itself. I'm sorry, sir. The separators are, I don't know, floor drains. So there's an oil, there's a, yeah, there's an oil water separator in floor drains as well. As we have a meeting outside of the building. There's another oil water separator tank. See, actually, I made sure the plan just outside the garage bed. As well, the monitoring, the monitoring.
They discharge to the source system?
Uh, yes.
For this facility, do you have to do anything for compliance, P C? With the parking lot itself, or is it that spills in the current parking area?
Uh, historically. Yeah, historically, we haven't. Because again, everything is happening within that sort of box of the basement. So there's nothing that's, there's nothing on the first floor by way of any of those oils or anything like that. It's all contained within that, that basement area. So historically, it means that you've done everything, not had any issues like that, P C.
It's been a while since I've looked at this. At least subject to every purpose of, you know, if you ever get this turned off on the inside.
Uh, not that aware of.
Travel on the lines of traffic. When we're talking before about low line of traffic. It's perceptual, this business itself, you have lines and lights.
It's really love that.
Do you have a sense of the typical wait time for building?
Uh, so wait times, I mean typically somebody would be in, in the facility for oil change. Obviously, oil change is moved pretty quickly. So the way the business works is the first two bays are really the oil change bays. That's a fairly high turnover. Whereas I'm sure you won't bend to a quick move. Those are, you know, 15 or 20 minutes, you're, you're in and out. And then the other bays are for, you know, what might be a deemed a longer service. Obviously, if you're, if you're trying to upsell other additional services. You know, we're, we're talking 35 to 40 cars a day is a good, is a good performance store. So that's, that's kind of the chains of, of, of a day. And we're, we're typical business hours, sort of that nine to five-ish plus or minus, so.
So typically with kind of the flow of the business itself, you may have a couple of cars waiting to pull up.
Right, we, we design, and Jiffy Loop asks us to design for a double car stack behind each garage bay. So you could, in theory, have a car in each bay and two cars behind it and still room to circulate the site. Frankly, we would probably kill to have that many cars.
You'd like to have that. What, I don't know if you brought this up, your exterior lighting?
So because, because of the hours of the facility, we actually don't require any light bulbs because of the hours that John just mentioned. So anything would be handled on the building itself.
Okay, so any of the lights on the building are down then, right?
Correct, LED down lights. And then at night, it's really just emergency and safety lighting. I mean, we don't propose any large full lighting on it in there because we're not open generally during nighttime hours.
And you're, well, some of the places, you guys have to do tires there. But the tires would slowly end up always in piles of tires from trash. No outside storage.
That is correct.
Right, no outside storage.
That is correct.
Right, okay, no outside storage.
Understood, understood Mr. Chair.
All right, is there a dumpster inside?
There is.
They have a, they should have an enclosure there.
And an enclosure after.
You're closing the dumpster?
Correct, our standard spec is a, is a, usually a slip block. But we can make this be that brick facade, the matching building that works better.
That would be really great.
Typically, the cardboard boxes wherever the products are supplied.
What happens to the waste?
That's, that is a good question that I'm not sure I get the answer to. I, I, yeah, I'm not, I'm not really sure. How specifically they dispose the.
Well, they're not dumpster, they're not.
That's correct. That I can tell you for sure, it's not a little bit of oil situation.
Some other process inside.
Yes.
Okay, um, let's see. Anybody, anybody, anything else?
I just have one question. Just one question. The signage that's shown in the elevation forms, do you anticipate getting approval as a part of the site plan for those? Or would that be a follow-on application?
Anyway, I'd love to get the approval for those. But I think we understand that given the, the regulations for signage, it's probably a little robust.
I mean, I can deal with it. On your life, it's just. Yeah, because they got, if you want it as a part of the site plan approval, which we would prefer.
Okay.
How would you see, you know, dimensions of what both signage is just to analyze to make sure it complies with code? And if it doesn't, then you may bear it.
We'll, we'll come back, what we typically do. We'll come back with the compliant amount of signage so that you can approve it. And then I advise the client, you'll do, do you want to go for variances after the fact for additional signage? Knock yourself out. Here's what you're allowed, here's what we can get you.
One other thing too. I've got a whole bunch of data points on it. If you could just make this a little longer, myself.
We thought you wanted, we thought you wanted to see that brick really big.
Now even these could be just longer like 17 or something. And you find only I have all your, all your information, so. All right, want to do a secret right up there?
Based on the discussion with this on previous year, any reason to send this to more people? This is a motion for underaction. Town of Wexford planning board considered request by applicants for engineering to construct four parcels located at 1161 and 1171 Ridge Road and 974 Ridge Road. And had a gas bill number is 080.12-1, sorry, -2-1. And the two parcels, and remove two existing buildings for construction of three thousand square foot Jiffy Loop Auto Care Facility and newly formed the 0.84 parcel with full access to Ridge Road, to Jackson Road and right in access from Ridge Road. Right in, right out access from Ridge Road. And left out to, to our layout. The project also includes associated parking landscape and volume system. The planning board determines if the proposed action is a lawless action based on the file number one, the action required. A change in use variance from zoning board appeals to allow autorail use in the district. This excludes the proposed action of type two action as defined in section 617.5C 9249 residential structure. The planning board determined that the action is subject to civil agency review pursuant to part 617.6B4 of SEER and that it is the most appropriate agency for making the determination of significance. The planning board therefore doesn't exonerate the agency for the proposed action. The planning board is giving consideration of criteria for determining significance set forth in section 617.7C1 of SEER and has one, consider the information contained in the short environmental assessment form part of the date of January 28, 2021. Number two, consider the public comments directed at the planning board during the capse review on February 2nd, 2021. Three, consider public comments directed at the planning board during the public hearing on June 1st, 2021. And four, complete the partial environmental assessment form. Now therefore, be resolved at the Town of Wexford Planning Board hereby determining that the proposed action will not have a significant impact on the environment for reasons set forth with the action of determination and a significance. Being further resolved at the Town of Wexford Planning Board is authorized to take all actions reasonable and necessary to file a negative declaration and discharges the Town of Wexford Planning Board responsibility as an agency for this action. Being further resolved at the Town of Wexford Planning Board based on the information analysis above and the reference supporting documentation and discussions on the actions by the Town of Wexford Planning Board is documented on the dance for this meeting that the proposed action will not resolve any significant environmental effects. Being further resolved at the Town of Wexford Planning Board therefore makes a determination of its significance. Being further resolved at the Town of Wexford Planning Board based on the above reasons, this is a manual declaration of settlement of this determination. I'll second the minor correction of the stating of 1161, 1171, and 974 Ridge Road. Stand second for Jackson.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Dardina?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Cosell?
Hi.
Mr. Walter?
Hi.
Mr. Weena?
Hi.
Mr. Kishan?
Got it.
Okay, the applicants here for the preliminary approval and seeing what you said. Okay, we're gonna make motion for the preliminary?
I'm making a motion for the preliminary approval for Jiffy Loop located on Ridge Road and Jackson Road. Subtle to PRC counts, subtle to level credit posted in Town of Wexford. All approvals should be constructed according to specification for Town of Wexford. And a lawful inspection should conform to specification of Town of Wexford. And a settlement should be required by the management of the state of Town of Wexford. And power of all requirements of any state county or town agency. Addressed British, related, senior, landscaping, property, maintenance, storage. Things are subject to being. C11. And he's paid. May put.
Should, probably should put in there too, because they did get a variance.
It's not, yeah, the determination is a big.
Yeah.
Second.
I have a second.
Mr. Walter?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Dardina?
Hi.
Mr. Cosell?
Hi.
Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Weena?
Hi.
Mr. Kishan?
All right.
Thank you.
So how about weeks?
Does the public hearing remain open?
I'm sorry?
Does the public hearing remain open?
No, the public hearing is closed. This was the public hearing.
Yes.
Why, you want to remind me?
I didn't know if there was a motion or anything. Okay, we should be back on the 15th.
Yeah, just on your final pro, I can have all of your paperwork and stuff, you know? Or any, any changes. Actually, you know what? We should put that in because if they got their drawing and they come in and have to have to do another order, change it. Dave, you could imagine, make it subject to, um, well, they won't be able to have preliminary final approvals on the cover sheet of the drawing. Which is part of a, trying to make more of your own, you can't have everything, you know? We'll do that. Well, we can put, you know what? If they got preliminary, our final's gonna be nothing but minor detail. So on your cover sheet of your final drawing, put it on the resolution that we did now, you know, the approvals. This way that stuff can be checked by Highway Department and so on and so forth. Building inspector, he knows what we looked at, you know?
So we'll add the preliminary.
Yeah, put that on your final drawing.
Okay.
Okay?
At this point, are we gonna wait till you file with, to do any kind of a resolution like ours to the subdivision to our combined lots?
Was that something?
That was part of the application.
We didn't, we didn't do that originally? We didn't?
The first, yeah, the first meeting was just introductory. I'm not sure there were any motions.
Okay, I, I didn't recall. All right, yeah, want to make a motion, want to make a motion? Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. For, for resolution for.
For subdivision.
Yeah, I've probably got one here. Yeah, I think I've got one.
I guess if we land a motion for subdivision approvals for combining, um, parcels. Because we're gonna have to give a parcel on that. So we're combining parcels 080.12-2-1 and 080.13-2-2. And 080.13-2-3.1. Two parcels. And that the final subdivision map we filed with the county. For final subdivision application. Prepared by engineer, the license for the.
This probably, this, I can come back and. I'll second. Basically, you're approving the, the. Yeah, the second.
No, it's all, all about creating a, they do. And it's the new seller number.
All right, Mr. Anderson?
Hi.
Mr. Walter?
Hi.
Mr. Dardina?
Hi.
Mr. Mixel?
Hi.
Mr. Cosell?
Hi.
Mr. Weena?
Hi.
Mr. Kishan?
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care. Okay, I guess with that, we're all set for the evening. So thanks for coming in.